Chapter eight violations. So I feel like from what we gathered at the last, you know, couple of meetings, this is a good compromise for everybody. It's giving us the permit and the information that we need, and it's also keeping the properties clean, you know, and the problems that we're hearing taken care of, like grass and weed, snow and ice, that kind of thing. So what's next? Discussion, public comment?
Just sorry, Mark here on the Zoom. We can only see the prior slide. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
We probably need to further people on Zoom just click through each slide really quick.
Yeah.
So starting here, this was the slide that we were shown that shows the local municipalities, what their regulations are. They still can't see it?
Now we can see what's next. Now we see rental housing permit and payment system.
Bear with us for their technical difficulties.
Thank you.
We can actually add them on to the agenda packet online so everybody can get them. Yep.
The answer typically is always yes, but I looked to Amy for this one. Okay.
Okay, can we see that now?
You see rental housing permit and payment system.
Yes, that's what you need to be seeing.
All right.
Okay, so, and I'll just kind of pick up from where Summer left off. So we'll make sure that the slides are available online for folks, and if you don't see them, you can also email us and we'll get them to you. But the jux of this idea came from after our last discussion, and the discussion point was that we don't have good data right now on how many rental, short-term rentals we have in Patton Township. The state, the Center for Rural Pennsylvania, actually did a study, and within a five-mile radius of State College Borough, which they had data for, short-term rentals are a $33 million revenue generating business. So we are within the five-mile zone of State College Borough, so I would assume some of that is in Patton. However, we don't know that. The biggest concern that we have heard, both from our elected officials and from other residents in the township, was short-term rentals as the safety aspect. Because if you rent a hotel, or if you rent a long-term rental, those are inspected, those have things that they have to, regulations they have to follow. So when we looked at what we already had in place, we already have the rental housing regulations in place through the Center Region Code Office. Right now, our trigger is seven consecutive days. If we take that down to one, and make all long-term and short-term rentals play by the exact same rule, you all have to get a permit, you have to get inspected, you have to make sure you're meeting the safety code issues within the property maintenance code, and then we will have them check if it's a short-term rental or a long-term rental, because then we'll be able to track the data. So we're not going to talk about capping the number of days that you can sell your short-term rental, because we've heard varying issues with that. We're not going to cap what zoning districts this can go in. What we're going to do is require that by August 1st, if you're operating any kind of a rental in the township, you have a permit, you go through the inspection process. The point system, State College Borough has used for years, and we all have it within our property maintenance code, it's just State College is the only one who's turned it on. I spoke with our solicitor today, and we think that the point system is something we can make work for Patton Township. State College uses it a lot for the fraternities and some of the student housing downtown, because they have different issues that we don't have necessarily. But we can look at then evaluating if we're having the grass and weed issues, the snow and ice issues, the neighborhood concerns that we hear about. And then in six months to a year, we can sit down and look and see where we're at, and if any additional regulations are or are not warranted on short-term rentals. I also know that the state local government commission is about to release their report that they've done, they've been doing research for over the last year or so on short-term rentals. And I do, I have heard rumblings, I don't know 100% anything, but I have heard that the state may come in and preempt our ability to regulate short-term rentals. So this at least gives us a baseline, so we have some protection for folks that are coming into our community to actually rent out a property. And this protects the folks who've reached out to us and said this is their small business, and that they want to comply with regulations. So I'm hoping that this is a good interim solution. This probably isn't the final solution, depending on what the data shows, but at least it will get us the data, and it will get us some type of regulation for safety, and also have a way to address some of the concerns that we do hear from others. And again, we'll be treating every rental the same, long-term and short-term will be treated the same, we won't be carving out anything additional.
So I have received a fair bit of outside discussion on this matter. And Amy, you and I have sat down and talked about this at length after. So one of the compromises that, in working with everybody, was the big issue, safety. The second big issue is we don't have good data. So therefore, you know, previous data, data scientist type work. So before we do too much, we want good data so that we can back up our arguments, or so that we can see what each regulation does, so that we are doing good limited government on this issue. So my understanding is for the August 1st deadline, there's going to be two permits that you have to get. The first one is the cog permit. The second one is the Patton Township permit, that just basically says, long-term, short-term. I would love to add to that, short-term owner occupied, or short-term not owner occupied.
Yeah, and that would just be a data point collection. That would not, we're not talking about any of that type of regulation at this point.
Okay. Because that, that allows us to start looking at other issues that we, as a township, need to be concerned about. Safety, health, and openness for all. Because there's a big issue that we haven't talked about here when it comes to short-term rentals, is ADA compliance. So that's something else that we're going to have to talk about in six to 12 months after we have data points. So keep that in the back of your mind, so nobody is getting surprised, okay?
And I would also add, based on that too, that I just, in my brief conversation with the solicitor this afternoon, we can look at the property maintenance code, and we have some properties that were built prior to, you know, 1960. And in what I was in Harris Township, we actually exempted some of those properties from some of the sections of the property maintenance code, because we knew they could never meet ceiling height requirements, or minimum square footage. So. We could look at that as well, and look at what we want to talk about with the property maintenance code, if there's something we need to carve out, because we have some older properties in the township. And also, one of the other points I want to make is, the discussion we can have, Gettysburg Borough, I would really encourage all of you to read the Center for Rural PA's report that just came out on short-term rentals, because they looked at how they're handled across the state of Pennsylvania. Gettysburg Borough limits theirs, I talked to their manager last week at a conference, they limit theirs based on zoning district, and then they had everyone, they required everyone to get a rental housing permit by a certain date. If you didn't have the permit, you had to go through the zoning hearing board. So I would encourage anybody that's operating with a rental, a short-term rental now, to get the permit by August 1st if this goes into play, because that would protect you with grandfathering, should we look at additional regulations. It's the Center for Rural Pennsylvania's report that just came out. Yes.
And that will also be.
It's also, yeah, it's in the agenda. Yeah, it was a real eye-opener, because I did not realize this was a $33 million revenue generating business in this community, globally, not just Patton Township.
That, that number is not tax revenue, that is what it's making in general.
For people.
We're not getting any of that. So now, having, so at this point, I think what we'll do is we'll have some discussion here as a board, and get everybody's thoughts and concerns. Now, I would say let's start with the member, our member that is on Zoom first.
Yep.
And then we'll go, we'll go down the road.
Sharon, do you have any feedback?
Yeah, I really, I like this compromise, I like the August 1st date for both long-term and short-term rentals, to get their safety inspections and get their permits and everything done. Because I think that covers everything that have been concerns, are the safety inspections. And I also love this idea of collecting all this information, so that we can revisit this next year, when we have a lot of specific data. So I really like this.
So going for the August 1st.
What do we do about the people who are currently having long-term, I mean, how will they be notified that they have to have this, or do they already have the permits?
So people with the long-term rentals already have permits, or they should already have permits. We will make sure that we do a push out through social media, if this is adopted by the board, and we will make sure that we get the word out, and hopefully lead on the realtors to help us as well, get the word out to residents that they need to put a short-term rental, they need to get their permit as well, so they get that through us.
Okay.
The question for the board on the August 1st is, do we want to have this be for anybody that's completing a purchase now, because they want to do this, or do we want to hold this only to those people that are already operating?
It should be everybody.
Okay, so.
If you're buying a house now, and you're going to make it a short-term rental, and this gets passed by the board, you need to get a permit.
Okay.
Every single person that's doing any kind of a rental should get a permit. Right now, we have 4,000 active long-term rental permits in the township, so we'd like to see, you know, we don't have good data as to what we have on Airbnb, VRBO, the other ones, but we'd like to see those folks come into compliance as well, if the board approves this.
Okay, but my question was, is, did we want to have a drop-dead date for owning the house by, no? So we're going to do a straight August 1st? Okay. Is everybody on the board good with that?
I just had a question, so let's say you purchase a house to pursue this in September, you have to wait an entire year?
No.
Yeah, they should get.
So there's a process?
Yeah, yep.
Just to clarify, yeah, then fine, new date.
So, yeah, you need, the August 1st is the deadline date to be grandfathered. If you are not registered and permitted by August 1st of 2025.
If you're currently operating a short-term rental, yeah. If you're new, you can still apply for a permit after you buy, if you buy September, October, November, wherever, moving forward.
Okay. But if these go away, the people that, before August 1st?
Yeah, we could potentially look at grandfathering those properties.
Okay. So anybody before August 1st is grandfathered, regardless of changes after August 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Ideally, yes.
So we can assume that these people that are grandfathered with new changes coming up in the next 12 months are going to be grandfathered with ADA, all of those?
That's not, yeah, that's not an assumption I would make, because that's in the property maintenance code, and one of the things with, we'd like to get you to agree to the concept tonight, or see if you agree with the concept tonight, I should say. And if you do, then the solicitor, Nicole, planning staff, myself, and the code office need to sit down and look at the property maintenance code, look at the point system, because again, some of that point system is really dependent on student housing, and that's not what we're looking at. And look at how we can craft some regulations, that then we can come back in April at your meeting, and explore further kind of the framework of what we've put together, and see if you're in agreement with it.
So is everybody in agreement with the August 1st deadline?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And just by a show of hand, I'm not going to open it up to comments.
I just have a question in my head, just on the.
We'll get to that when we actually open it up for comments, but I am going to pull your side of the room really quick. Those of you that own, or either are for short-term rentals or against short-term rentals, are you okay with an August 1st drop-dead? If it's not, you're not going to be in a situation.
Can we push it back to the end of the year?
No.
We, August 1st is the start of the academic calendar, and also the start of football season, and that seems to be what drives a lot of our short-term rentals.
So.
I'm great with it.
Okay.
I already have a permit.
No, I mean, I already have a.
I think it's a great compromise.
Okay.
Is it for the application of the permit? What if it takes some time to get?
That's where we'd like to talk with the code office, to make sure that timeline works with them as well, because they're also doing their inspections on the long-term rentals as well throughout town, so.
Also, already have a permit, but I'm just thinking some people may need some time to get wires from the tech, or should they do that?
I think right now, we want you to apply as early as possible, and maybe there'll be fudgerum, as long as you've applied sooner rather than waiting to the last moment.
Yeah, and if the code office comes back and says August 1st is not doable, let's make it September 1st, we could certainly look at that. But again, we're trying to catch, we know what the market does around here, and I really, again, encourage you to read that report, but it's football season, it's students coming back, and that's really prime rental season in state colleges, like beach season, right, and beach areas. So we want to try to make sure we're capturing that as well.
Okay. Now, for the ADA start part of it, we're going to set that off to the side, because that's a six month.
That's a code discussion.
That's a code discussion, we're not ready to have that discussion tonight. I'm going to now ask the board, is, does anybody else want to talk about the August 1st, but it sounds like we can move on to, okay. Does anybody want to, people's thoughts, and I'll start down there, and then we'll end with Sharon, 10, on the 10-point for the rules violation point system proposal.
I mean, I think that's really reasonable, I mean, that's what currently exists when you are doing a long-term rental, so I'm definitely an advocate for those types of regulations. I think if you're earning income on a rental, whether that's short-term or long-term, which everyone should be held to the same standards. And I think the point system is, definitely encourages people to make sure that they're taking care of their properties, so I totally support that.
I support to everything.
Okay.
I also support it.
Me too.
Yeah, directionally, it makes sense, I guess I have a question on the point system itself, what, how many points is a violation, or a?
Well, and I think that's one of the things we need to look at, and also there's an appeals process. The Borough has an appeals process, and we've talked briefly with the code office when we were talking about doing this, and we would have an appeals process here as well. So there'd be an opportunity that if you get a violation for grass, and you say, no, but I actually cut the grass, I have the documentation, that can be taken off the property as well.
I think directionally, it makes a lot of sense.
I was going to say, Amy, to the Borough, at least for the properties I have downtown, a lot of times, you'll get a warning, so they might, like I'll get an email at 6:00 in the morning, says, you know, 24 hours with such, such property to either clean up party materials, those are the students, or clean up, or mow their grass, you know, you might have 48 hours, and then if it's not done, then you get the points. So, you know, I think there's different ways, it's not just immediately striking.
And if it's criminal activity, I mean, you could basically just shut it down, right? I mean.
I would think within reason, yeah. And I don't think, again, I don't think we're going to have a lot of criminal activity at the short-term rentals. I mean, and honestly, I have to thank Chris in the audience, she did a deep dive on our short-term rentals. Our noise issues are mostly the student rentals, they're not in the short-term rentals. So the stuff, some, there's some very student, and I don't mean to carve out the students, but there is some very student-specific activities that I don't think you're necessarily going to have with the short term.
Okay. So, and Sharon, I want to make.
One more?
Yeah, sorry.
I think you just answered my question for the most part, but there's, there's going to be like a due process.
Yes, yep.
For appeals and so forth. Rental suspension for what period of time? I mean, is that for good, or?
How long do they do it now, Summer, do you know?
For the circular, the suspension, one year.
Suspension, one year.
A year, okay. And, and I think I asked this lesson, who's going to do all this? Who's going to monitor this activity? You folks are going to be blessed with that.
We have a zoning officer, which is wonderful, we have an ordinance enforcement officer.
That's a volunteer.
Well, it's going to be due diligence between myself, the code office, and ordinance enforcement officer.
And the other quick question says, on the property, it's property, not the owner for multiple properties? It would just be the individual property, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and Sharon?
I think it sounds very fair. I like it.
All right. And I'm for it for a multitude of reasons, mainly because it takes care of the concerns that many of the constituents of Patton Township have, specifically of, we don't know who the person that owns the house next door is, they don't shovel the ice or snow off their, off their walkways. Okay. Can we get the slide back up on, on the main bullet points here? Because I have a bunch of extra bullet points, but they're not actually in what we're working on, so.
The point system, or?
Oh, okay, so we were August 1st, okay, permitted in all zoning districts. This is part of the compromise, does the board have any questions about this?
Nope.
Everybody understands that, okay. The, okay, the, the Patton Township per, permit, what, what other data, is there, is there any other basic data that we might be missing, or that we should get in this?
I mean, the other thing we can do is, we can look at, you know, regulations from other parts of the state as well, Gettysburg and some others, just to see what they have on their permit applications. I mean, we're collecting data, so really for us, it's more in Tracer, where the permit gets logged in the software, just having the checkbox, so we know that it's a short-term, so that, again, we can then run a report, long-term issues versus short-term issues. Yeah, we can put that on as well, again, as a data point as well.
Could we put ADA compliance?
Well, that's, so we have to talk, Bill brought that up, and with all due respect, Bill, you should not have brought that up, because that's, a lot of that's.
I did have it on my little notes.
A lot of that's in state law, so we have to talk with the code office about what's in the property maintenance code now, what we're asking people to do. I know Kristin knows, because she deals with rentals. So we'll talk with the code office and bring you those answers, and maybe have, see if we can get Walt to come to the meeting next month.
Yeah.
Because the biggest things, some people may remember years ago, probably 10 years ago now, there was a fire downtown, and the rental did not have a third ingress or egress, and there was a real issue with that, and so there were restrictions put in, or regulations put in, related to that. So the safety stuff, we want to make sure we can look at. But again, we do have properties that were built, especially some of the older properties in Park Forest that were built in the 1960s, that don't necessarily meet some of the standards for square footage and that kind of thing. So that's where there's some flexibility.
So putting a tag on that really quick, then we should be asking, dated the property, when was the property built?
Yeah, they, so, again, when I worked in Harris Township, we had a lot of older properties in the village, some of them were built in the 1800s, and we had, they have things within the property maintenance code that Harris opts out of, because they know that there are certain properties before, built before 1996, built before a certain year, that they just can't comply. So we'll, we'll want to look at that as well, and again, I'm not the expert on the property maintenance code, that's between Nicole and Walt, but we'll sit down with them and carve that out.
And Amy, just to be clear, that, that process, when someone would apply for an application for a short-term rental, going through Center Region Code, they're going, they will have to meet the requirements of Center Region Code, that's outside of Patton Township.
Correct.
I mean, that, that's the Center Region Codes, standards in the property maintenance.
And we have flexibility within the regional property maintenance code that we've adopted. We all adopt into certain sections and adopt out of some sections.
Right.
So we want to do a deep dive to what, everything we've opted into, and if there's anything that needs to change, but, no, they have to follow what's in that property maintenance code.
So I hear at least two people, myself.
Yeah, and they would need to get their code permit before they get our rental housing permit as well.
Are concerned about these sort of safety issues. Is there anybody else that's concerned about that, and wants more, wants more information gathered by staff? That's all we're asking, is do we want more information?
Well, it's probably the data gathering, eventually.
Okay.
Need to figure out all of the various specifics.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to make a burdensome process, but, I mean, this is a very thorough report, but it talks, the initial document last time was a little challenging with limiting the number of days someone could use their property. But if you want to collect that information, you could ask how many days it's available, how, what's the occupancy rate, just near the date that's in this report. I'm not sure how terribly relevant it is, or what it'd be used for, but it was certainly interesting to read the report, maybe we'd want to know that information. But again, I want to balance that with being burdensome to the applicants.
Another data point as far as owner, if it's not owner occupied, are they local or not?
Pat, isn't that under the?
I think that's.
That's a requirement.
If they're not within 25 miles, or minutes, or whatever it is, they have to have a person in charge, it has to be available.
So we will not be opting out of that?
Right, no, not at all.
Okay. All right. Does the board have any questions related to this? I'm going to do a straw poll.
I think the staff did a great job replying or responding to the questions that were raised from the public, from us.
So straw poll, we can, everybody is supportive of this framework to move forward and have done for April?
Yes.
Then I'm going to open it up for comments, and then when the comments are done, I would like a motion, and we'll do a vote. So with that, I'll start with one person on Zoom, back and forth. No, you're not getting to, 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 reserve and transfer balances of time. No, and it's going to be one person.
I think we want to have a long meeting.
One person per household, please.
I got you, we're good.
Okay.
Probably have dinner plans.
Right. So we typically give five minutes on this. Is the board okay with five minutes?
Sure.
Okay. Let's go. So first up on Zoom, please.
If anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment on the proposal.
Oh, and for everybody, name, where you live.
Just naming where you live, that's all.
Naming where you live, so.
Anyone on Zoom?
My hand is raised, I'm not sure if you can see this, Mark.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Mark Fournier, I have an interest back for doing it, I own a short-term rental in Patton Township, and I'm the one that plans to retire to State College, to be honest, we're looking to it. Thank you, I think this is a good compromise, appreciate everybody's efforts on this front. Just a few questions perhaps, and requests. One is that many of us already have a rental permit through Center County, and what it sounds like you're doing is adding a short-term rental application to it, or could you clarify a little bit of what your expectation is? Even though you already have Center County rental permit, you need to also apply for a Patton Township short-term rental permit, is the way I think I understand it. So two.
So if you already have a permit through the Center Region Code Office, you would then be required to get a Patton Township rental permit as well. So that way, then we can track short-term versus long-term, and so you would have to have that in place by August 1st. But the code office, the code permit would come first, and then our permit process.
And my understanding is, we're requiring that of all rentals, regardless of short-term, long-term?
Correct.
So it's not targeting anybody, it's, are you long-term, or are you short-term?
Yep. Thank you. Then I ask that, I think sometimes things are lost in interpretation, that people interpret what they see something as being. So I ask that you supply very clear definitions to things like, what does owner occupied mean, what does short-term rental mean, et cetera, so that there's no gray area on what it is you're saying you're committing to when you file down with the change. And then I'd also ask that you provide links to the forms, as soon as possible, that And then I'd also ask that you provide links to the forms as soon as possible, the application is August. I think most people that are doing short-term rentals are pretty responsible, albeit those that don't shovel their walkways anymore, but so that we can do it quickly and help you in those efforts. I would ask, you know, some of the mechanisms are a little outdated, so if there's a way to fill and complete the form out in a digital manner and submit it that way, that would be super helpful. If not, you know, we'll do it as you do, but I'm hoping you'll consider that. And then I know you don't want to take comments about the ADA component, but I will tell you that that statement sort of raises a lot of hair, so I'm sure that the short-term rental people are all going for it. So I would just ask that you make it clear when the ADA concern discussion will take place, and when the data that you're going to extrapolate is also going to be reviewed so that we can participate in active dialogue on that. Thank you so much for your hard work, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. So that was three minutes, perfect.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Sorry, I just am seeking some clarification myself. So on the subject that we don't really want to dive into tonight on the ADA, I just want clarity, isn't that going to be directed by Center Region Code?
It is.
That's not Patton Township will not decide whether you need something ADA, that is driven by the patent, or by Center Region Code?
And my understanding right now is short-term rental definition is anything under?
Seven consecutive days.
I thought we were going to do.
We're going to change it to one, everybody has to get a permit over one.
Oh, yeah, but what's the max?
At the moment, with the new proposal, there's no.
Maximum?
There's no maximum. It's day one requires a permit. The seven consecutive days goes away, it's everybody needs a rental permit at day one.
Yep.
Yes.
So you won't have a definition between short-term and long-term?
Other than you, long-term, you have a tenant living there. We'll define it by the number of days the tenant, yeah.
Okay, I was going to say at least on the Patton Township data point side, less than 30 days?
We have to talk about that, that's one of the details we will have to work out.
All right. Okay. Five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, my name's Eric Orient, I'm a short-term rental owner, I have some places in Park Forest. I live in Ferguson Township, but my rentals are in Park Forest. First off, thank you, I feel heard, and that means a lot. I was very concerned that decisions are being made without data and due diligence, and so I very, very much appreciate that you all took time to do that and that you're listening to all the stakeholders, those who are against it and those who are for it, so thank you. I'm absolutely in favor of permits, I want my place to be safe. I have no problem with any kind of point system as long as it is universal and that's not just for short-term, it's for long-term, thus no one's targeted and a property should be maintained irrespective of how it's used. So if that's out there, that's wonderful as well, and if my property's unsafe or unkept, I'll turn in my permit, you won't have to come get it. I agree that we have to use data, the one thing I'd give a little bit of pushback to William is when you said $33 million, but that money doesn't come to us, some of it does, I don't know how much. But as discussion goes forward on this, if we're going to use data, I do believe that there should be some type of economic study done to whatever degree is practicable to see what is the benefit to, excuse me, to Patton. This might not be part of that $33 million, but it's been $15,000 with a house cleaner last year, $5,000 plus with a landscaper, and so there are those small businesses that benefit from this, not just use of the community. And then with the point system, you already mentioned the appeal system process, so that was my other point here, but thanks again, very much appreciate you doing this.
Thank you. We're speeding up. Just really quick to respond to you, the $33 million, let me clarify, that's not tax revenue, that's not a tax revenue coming into us, that is a general revenue, and it doesn't come directly to Patton Township. I don't have the data to say how it affects Patton Township, so yes, I'm with you and I can say that I would also support some sort of economic benefit study down the road. And thank you for letting us hear you. I mean, everybody that we've talked to since January has been on board with the minimum permit, which is good. The point system takes care of what we need to take care of, and it's going to be for all rentals, and then the appeal process, and that's, have you had any thoughts about how that would look, is that going to go?
We, no, we've not talked in any depth about how that would look, we've talked about using through the code office. I think the borough also gives the manager some discretion with some of the appeal process as well. I'd like to, this all, I will, full transparency, say this all developed in the last about week or so that we kind of pivoted on what we were thinking, just as we read that report and then thought about some other things, and again, wanting to be fair to the folks that have been here and knowing that we didn't necessarily have the data to back up what we were talking about before. So there are still some things we need to talk about, I need to talk with the borough manager as well because he's been doing this forever with the point system, and Tom's a good guy, so I'm going to sit down with him and pick his brain a little bit as well.
Okay. Okay, I don't see any hands up on Zoom, so I'm going to say next from the floor.
Evening, I'll be quicker than the last guy, too. Mark McMaster, I live in Benner Township, but I have two long-term rentals in Patton Township, I'm also a Realtor, so tons of data if you guys want it, obviously. I like this, I'm fully in favor of it, I've said from the beginning, everybody that holds their home out or a property in general for rental should have a permit because it's a safety thing, if you're holding it out to the public, it should be safe. I like the borough point system, I also own rentals in the borough, and it keeps you on top of your property, and that's what we want. My only question on how the point system will be administered here is since you're looking at owner occupied short-term rentals, will the points be applied all year or only when it's being short-term rented? So, you know, if they let their grass get high when it's just the owners there, or the owners are the ones who are getting the issues when they're not renting it, because then it reflects poorly on the short-term rental operators that are actually doing what they're supposed to be doing, and you have some guy rents it out one football weekend of the year, and then he's out there blaring his music at 2:00 AM, getting points, and it looks like short-term rental operators are bad, but it's actually the owner who's there creating the issues, and so I don't know how you're going to apply that, but something to keep in mind as you think about that process.
Yeah, that's a great question, thank you.
That one's an amazing question.
That's all I got.
Mark, the time.
That was like a minute.
You were actually, you were actually four seconds faster. But Mark, one quick thing, I do believe that if we're asking, is it, if it's owner occupied, would actually take care of your concerns? Because if it's not an owner occupied Airbnb, I guess we would assume that's a commercial Airbnb-type short-term rental.
I think we need to look more into this, because we do have some owner occupied properties that aren't doing their grass and their weeds and their.
Hundred percent.
Snow and their ice now. So yes, we need to look into that.
I agree.
Yes, you do.
And to be honest, as someone who owns a long-term rental and owns in a condo association, we have some condo owners that are long-term renters that I would love for you to pass that point system so we can get that cleaned up, because the way it is now, we don't really have a way to do that.
Right.
You know, a lot of the long-term rentals are the ones that they put it on the tenant to go out and shovel the walks and stuff like that, it just doesn't get done, and there's no, there's no real fallback unless Nicole happens to drive by, or the ordinance officer does, and says, oh, this guy didn't do his work here.
Yep.
Okay.
Good comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon has her hand up.
Oh, Sharon?
Yes, I think the most efficient way to address that question that was just asked, because I think it was a great question, is just to do it by property address. If somebody's got a rental permit, long or short-term, and there have been complaints, then it just goes against that address.
I agree, I think if you have the permit that, whether you are the person, if you're the owner, and you are breaking a rule that requires you to get the point, I mean, you have a permit on the address all year, so you should get the points, no matter who's staying there.
If you're using that for data to collect against short-term rentals, and they collect their short-term rental permit, and the owner is the one creating the problem.
But we'll know if they're owner occupied or not, so if the majority of the points are on an owner occupied, I think we could collect that data too, to recognize like 50% of them are on an owner occupied, that is the person that maybe is just renting, like, to your point, there are, I think most of you in this room obviously are renting them, you're doing the right thing, but we all have to be very honest here, we all know somebody that is renting one like one weekend or two weekends a month, and, you know, that, those folks are going to slip through the cracks probably, or maybe have been slipping through the cracks, and this, hopefully this process will get rid of them and then make more room for people that are doing it the right way.
I would agree with you, but I don't want that data to be used against short-term rentals at all.
Sure, sure.
When it's the owner living there creating the problem and not the, yes.
But I think too, like, I have lots of long terms, I have one house, I will share its address, but I get points every single weekend because we just have tenants in there currently right now that are, they are not going to follow the rules, they don't care how many points we're getting, they don't care how many fines, they get a fine from the borough and they get a fine from me, they don't care, every single Monday morning, I'm fining them, and I think we can recognize that, and I feel like everyone here would be on the same thing. If we're seeing it's like one specific address or two, and I think people will be smart enough to not just lump that into the data, or I will definitely advocate for that, because I know what happens with those points.
I'm not using people.
Not people, people.
Well, one thing with the point system, I'm assuming it goes to the owner.
Yes.
If it's a short-term rental, they know who's renting it, they'll never rent to them again.
Yeah.
No, that's a good point, yeah.
That's true, too.
Yeah, when you're locked into a long-term one, like I am, stuck with somebody for a year, giving me points.
But again, Mark, really good point, and we hear you. So with that, anybody else? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name's Tommy Songer, I actually live in Harris Township, but I do own property here in Patton Township. Been a longtime resident of Center County in our Center Region area. Just a couple of things, one thing to think about is properties under contract, some of my Realtor friends, I am a Realtor as well, like Mark, and I'll second his point, we have a lot of data, more importantly, we have a lot of interactions with customers that are concerned about short-term rentals, rentals and homeownership and how that is affected by these policies. So I would just think of that, we've got properties under contract at all times, obviously, there are people that may want this, and if agents are not aware of this coming around, somebody could end up buying a property and then find out that that property is not liable or, I'm sorry, eligible for a short-term rental, or there's some things in there that they did not know and probably wouldn't appreciate. I would also suggest that the permit application be submitted by August 1st, that way Walt and his team at Center Region Code aren't going to be having an issue with people saying, well, I had it in, but Walt didn't, or Code didn't review it quick enough, something like that. If it's in by August 1st, that happens to be a Friday, so it's the end of the week, if it's not in by that point, then, you know, that should be the deadline, I think, for application, and then you're not putting undue stress on the code office to try to perform by 5:00 on a Friday night. Some other considerations I heard came up, tourism, this is something I've been making a thing, I think short-term rentals, I know the hotels are mostly against this idea because it is direct competition for them, but I ask people to think, and the Visitors Bureau in particular, to think about tourism in general. When you folks go to the beach or to places with your family, you probably don't want to stay at a hotel, you're normally renting a house where you can all congregate together and cook meals and have that social aspect. So that is one way in which we can attract more tourism here versus less, and help that side of it and our local businesses that cater to the tourists that visit our area. One thing I'll say on the Realtor side of things, and I say this a lot when we have managers' meetings and things, is keep in mind as Realtors, when we get up and speak about these things, there's two main components of our mission, and one is private property rights, and one is affordability. And affordability comes into play, and Amy, I know you're a big proponent of this, and we're always trying to do the right thing when it comes to affordability, but knowing how expensive homes are here, keep in mind that those, there are some folks that live here, and this is a way for them to help, help them afford their home, make mortgage payment, make the tax payments and things like that, so keep that in mind. And then the last thing I'll say is, and I'm glad to see Mr. Tilke is here, I would just like to say that if you can coordinate with the other municipalities in some way, shape or form, so that, it's already hard enough for us to have to go around to five or six different municipalities and try to coordinate things and inform our clients, do the engineering, do the permitting and things like that, and know that everybody plays by a different rule. The property maintenance code, I think now, is more or less followed by all the municipalities together with a few minor changes by municipality, but that makes it very easy, and I would hope maybe you could do the same thing here, maybe with Mr. Tilke's help. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Songers, we hear you on this. Just, you know, you brought up tourism, the trade-off is exactly what you said, the trade-off is affordability, so, because again, we don't have the data to show this yet, but, you know, data hypothesis, if something isn't coming up, if somebody's not moving out of it, it's not coming back onto the market.
I think sure that they don't have the data.
He did a lot of.
Dang it!
But we've got data.
All right, well.
Yes, very preliminarily, when I looked at municipalities that regulated, and after they regulated, affordability got worse.
Well, we'll take a look at that, so. Okay, next.
We have someone in the audience.
Hi, my name's Carrie Miller, I have been a Patton Township resident since my family moved here in 1987 when I was three years old, with the exception of seven years when I owned a home in the borough before I moved back to Park Forest. I just, I want clarification to be listed when we get there on what owner occupied means, and I'm going to tell you my story real quick so you understand the complication there for me. I'm a real estate agent here in State College as well, my business is here, I also do appraising. My husband works out of Dulles Airport, so we recently bought a home in West Virginia to be close to his work when he is on call. So we split our time, we live here and we live there so that we can be together, and we also have a vacation property in Maryland. So the six months of the year thing gets a little complex for us. This is our primary residence, this is our home, this is where our family lives, this is where our doctors are, our pharmacy is, our dentists, our friends, where we go to trivia. However, the federal government requires two out of five, which is two years out of five, to be your primary residence, which is closer to 40%. This is fairly new for us, I may be here six months of the year, I may not, but it's not likely to be eight months, so I don't know how to check the box for Patton Township unless we're pretty clear on what it means to be a primary resident. Is that where I file my taxes? Is that?
So one thought on that, I have friends who live over in Harris Township, and they split their time between Bollesburg and Wilmington, North Carolina. Right. And they don't split it necessarily evenly, right? Sometimes it depends on what the weather's like up here. Where is your license, like where's your driver's license? Is it?
It's here, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we would go by, we can look into that, but maybe we'd go by where your primary, what you consider your primary residence to be.
Yeah, all of our cars are registered here, this is where we're licensed, this is where our passports say we live. However, you know, it just gets sticky from that perspective, and also the long-term, short-term rental, when I'm checking the Patton Township box for data collection, because we've had a 17-day rental last month, so if it's 10 days, do I check both boxes because I'm going to allow both? And we just, you know, that's the only way we can afford to have the homes, and so we just don't come back here when it's rented.
So I think my thought of that, because this was something that you and I talked about, is less than 30 days, that mirrors the hotel tax law, that would be a short-term rental, less than 30 days.
And am I checking the box that says this is my expected? And I, and I, am I checking the box that says this is my expectation? Because if somebody says, "Hey, I'm building a home. Do you have a place I can live for two and a half months?" And I say, "Sure, I'll just commute from West Virginia for two and a half months." Now I'm...
Yeah, I think we can look into what others have done and also what's in the Property Maintenance Code as well. I think we can work that out.
Yeah.
Because since we're collecting more data on that and less on, oh, you know, it's, it's less on this is the regulation based on the fact it's short-term versus long-term. So we can, you know, we can look into that as well.
I just want to make sure I'm giving you the data.
I appreciate that very much. I appreciate. It's a good conversation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Because I have a similar situation with like a 30-day rental. I'm like, okay, now my home.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why we wanted to get the discussion, the initial discussion this evening, and then get more into the weeds next month when we have more of this ironed out. Because again, this was like the last week and a half is when this all sort of was like, maybe this is the way we go. So.
So other thoughts? It's like driver's license, where are you registered to vote? And where's your car registered?
Where you pay your taxes.
Yeah, I think Ferguson's is based on where you pay your taxes.
Voter registration.
Voter registration. I knew it was something specific to hear. So yeah, we can look at that.
That's a good question. Now, I, I was being, I was being signaled by Mr. Tilka that somebody had their hand up.
I saw Sharon's hand go up and down, but it was pretty quick.
You have a, you have a comment? Sharon?
No, it got answered when Amy was talking.
Okay. All right. Next from the room?
Liam Goble. I do live in Ferguson Township. Own a couple of short-term rentals here. I'll echo Eric's comments that I do feel heard by this group, so I really appreciate that. So I want to thank you. I do support everything you guys are proposing right now. I did want some clarification. There was some discussion, but then the slide says something sort of different. There was a six to 12-month window that everybody kind of kept pointing to, but the slide points to 12 months of data, which to me, a year's worth of data seems like it's good. I'll clarify a little bit of, and I forget who said it. You were kind of talking like the beach season versus non-beach season. State College typically in the summer is really, really busy with short-term rentals, to the point that we're close to like 100% occupied. But the income at that time of year is not quite as high necessarily as the football season. So there's kind of two high points depending on how you define it. So you do get a little bit of that traffic, so it's not just, you know, a three-month period when they're throwing the, the football around. But I didn't know if, if I could get some clarification on that, six months, 12 months?
Well, that's actually good to know because, again, being ignorant to what the tourism season, in my mind, it's football season, but that's good to know that there's two actual seasons when these are being used. So that would lend itself more towards the 12 months than we could capture a full year of data.
And are you guys, I mean, I have a bunch of data, just because I've been doing this for a long period of time. Are you going to open this up to any sort of group that we might be able to sit and be a part of and provide some of that information to you?
I mean, we haven't gotten that far yet. I think what we'd like to do is get this in place, and then, you know, we could even at quarterly intervals start reviewing what we have to see what we have, what we've collected, and then reach back out to see what folks may have. The economic study that was mentioned, Happy Valley Adventure Bureau has a short-term rental task force. That's something that actually I could mention to them because that would be them or a CBICC thing, I would think, to do an economic look at this as well globally for everybody. But yeah, we can certainly keep in touch. We haven't really discussed what we're going to do, how we're going to collect and review the data right now.
Okay.
So really quick on, on having the data and sharing it, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, is if they give us data, we can look at it, but we're going to be disseminating that same data back out to the public. So if you're, if it's not public data and you don't want it to be public, you know.
Sure.
That's, you know.
And maybe one of the things we could recommend to the board is that after six months, we have a check-in, and we sit down and invite folks that are, have short-term rentals and folks from the general public, just to say, "This is what we're seeing. This is what we're not seeing. These are the concerns we have. These are the concerns we don't have." Is everyone on, all on the same page? Because I think the best way to build policy, right, is to try to get everybody to work together and, you know, have everybody have a say in what we're doing.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Remember, building policy is about compromise. So some people win a little bit. Some people win a little bit. That's compromise. Okay. Anybody else from the floor? Going once, going twice, going three times, four, five?
Hi, I'm Chris Fanning. I am a property owner in Patton Township. I actually live in London Grove Township full-time. I contacted Amy because I'm uniquely qualified. I am on my Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission in my area. I do operate a short-term rental, and luckily, I'm married to someone who loves to follow the rules. So he should be a code administrator because we had a permit way before we even realized we didn't need one. So we'll be coming up for our permit, both Patton Township and Center Region, again here in July. I really appreciate you hearing us. I love the point system. I don't think anyone in this room will be the person who gets the points, to be honest. And I am so sorry for you. I, I really am. The only thing that I would ask, and I did offer this at the Board of Supervisors meeting, Amy, I love the idea of rechecking in. If this group, that was a group of volunteers advising the committee, could have some representation from short-term owners, we would love to partake so that we can give our perspective as well. So I want to offer that again, and I just really appreciate you guys listening to us. So that's it. I feel like I should take questions.
Let's see, you don't have to.
No.
All right. Oh, I was about to say, if there's no other... Please.
I'm easy to miss.
My name's Will Flaherty. I live in Patton Township. I guess first I do want to thank you guys for coming up with a, a solution that isn't quite as dramatic. I have no issue with the point system. Right now, we, we all deal with customer reviews, and right now, mine is 4.95, and, you know, that is very important. That drives business for us. So we're already getting a point system, essentially. I've never had any calls, emergencies, anything like that. Maybe a, a light bulb is out. That's usually the extent of the issues that I have. One comment you mentioned back in January was posting a visible permit on the window from the street. I have a couple scenarios where I think that might not be the best idea. One, especially if you're limiting the number of nights that can be rented. It's probably going to be on weekends, so that's a really good sign that maybe nobody's there from Monday to Friday and might want to get into some nefarious activity. I also think about staying somewhere that was advertising that this is a short-term rental. That could also lead to maybe some worst nefarious activities that I think we all should be sensitive to and would open us, all of us, up to potential legal issues in that, that respect. You know, one of the things I think that's really being discounted are what we provide to parents. Just this summer, I had a family from Guam, a family from the Congo, and a family from the Singapore here dropping their kids off to school. And they didn't stay in a hotel. They wanted to cook for their kids. They stayed for a week, you know, to make, you know, you know how some mothers are? They want, they'll never leave, you know? I'm just telling you. Mine was the same way, but you know, they were able to come with a larger group. They were able to cook together. They were able to stay together. And, you know, that's something that's not happening in a, in a hotel setting, in my opinion. And just another scenario to kind of be aware of, I got a booking yesterday for the first weekend in March 2026, and I messaged, I called the guy. I said, "Did you mean the first weekend, like next weekend, or do you mean a year from now?" And he said, "No, a year from now." I said, "Oh, okay. Well, what's going on there?" He goes, "Well, the Big Ten Wrestling Tournament's in town." And he said, "I, I had two hotels for me and my, and the kids that are coming, and I was going to pay $3,400. He's paying 527 to me." So you, you want to talk about return to people? Price gouging is something people consider. You know, I know football weekend, you make more money, but we also do provide a much more affordable alternative to people that, that I think is overlooked. And then I, I have a couple of questions that you guys, I'll just kind of ask, and you can answer. The first is the, the cost of the new permit. I have a permit for Patton Town, or for Center County, so I don't know what it would cost to get another one. And are all 11,000 rental permits going to be charged the same fee? Because they got to designate whether they're short or long. Well, if you say that thing's $50 times 11,000, that's a lot of money coming in. So I also wonder about just the, if I have a permit for Center County, am I getting a second inspection, or does my inspection from Center County make me eligible for the patent permit? Or am I getting two different inspections? Just wondering. You kind of, I already talked about the 12-month, and then I was wondering if you could expand on what you meant by grandfathered. Is that just a term that, like, we're kind of discussing still? Or is it a term that we, we should be more aware of? Like, are we, if we satisfy these rules, are we considered grandfathered in? If that becomes a thing, or are we like on the list? And then what happens to that grandfather? You know, like if someone were to die and their child moves into the house or takes over the house, do, do they keep that grandfathered permit?
So I'll let Nicole start with the permit question.
So for inspections, inspections would done, be done specifically by Center Region Code?
I'm saying if we already have one of those.
Correct. The only thing we would require new is our permit. So once you get all your inspections and everything with Code, they give you the rental housing permit through the Code Office. You will then bring that to us for us to be able to.
So if I already have a Center County permit, do I need to get?
You would get this Patton Township.
Okay, so I don't need to do another inspection?
And there wouldn't be another inspection.
Okay.
And just for clarification, it's not a, it's not a Center County permit? It's Center Region.
I'm sorry. I meant Center.
County governments, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so just for record-keeping on that one.
And then on the grandfathering, what some municipalities have done, Gettysburg Borough is the one example that I have, is they said everybody that had a short-term rental, even if you were in a zoning district where they said they were going to outlaw them, you were grandfathered, but you had to have a permit by a certain date. So then when they said, "No new short-term rentals," if you didn't have your permit, you had to go to the zoning hearing board. Pennsylvania law prescribes how variances are given, and so it's very difficult to get a variance from a regulation if you self-created the hardship. So we would probably discuss something similar for here if, and that's a big if, if we were to discuss any additional regulations. So we wouldn't say, like if we decided we were having all these problems in the rental, residential zoning districts, we wouldn't come and say, "If you've complied and you've gotten your permit by August 1st, that we're going to take away your ability to do it necessarily. We're going to stay going forward, no new." And then there would have to be reg, something in there about, "Does it stay with the property until the property transfers?"
Okay.
So those are things that, again, big ifs, because right now, we're just going to the, the first step.
I, I just meant because grandfathered was thrown around, and I just didn't know how we were defining that. Is there going to be a cost to the new application?
We're talking about, yes, there will be a cost because Nicole's time will be involved.
And are all 11,000 going to do that, or just the people that want to state that, "I have a permit with Center Region. I want to identify this as a short-term." And then how would that be enforced for the people that are not?
Again, that's one of the details that we need to talk about.
Okay.
Doesn't code or doesn't permit have to just cover the cost of administration? So the permit should be the same cost?
Well, it depends, right? Permits are actually different amounts. So we all have different zoning permit costs and other things. So we want to look at how much of Nicole's time goes into it because we want to recoup her cost.
Well, if it's a long-term versus a short-term, the permit should be the same.
It should be the same, correct. Yeah, that's one of the things that we need to look at.
And then the, the last thing I have is just in, I'm not trying to divide and conquer here, but you, you mentioned people that have condos or, or townhouses on the other side of Atherton that have a, an HOA. You know, all these, these, these weeds and grass and shoveling, like all these things are not an issue for us. We're already paying HOA for that. And so it sounds like that's a big deal. It's not as big a deal on the, on the east side of Atherton.
Right.
I guess. So.
Just remember, the HOAs have considerable power, so grandfathering, whether or not it's in this one, the only reason why I bring it up is because many had talked to me prior to this, and that was a concern for them. And that's where this compromise sort of leads from. It, it is, is the, well, if we're going to do this, then, then, or if you guys want to keep doing this. So it, it was that that sort of has morphed into this. So that's why that term comes up. And also grandfathering, typically what it has to do from a legal standpoint is, if there's been a code change, you know, as long as that property, the, the former existing use of the property was being, continues to be used for that, it's allowed to continue to be used for that. And when, but when the, when it stops being used for that, it no longer has the ability to be used for that. So that's, that is the, the legal concept that I believe we're talking about here. And you, and the staff can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Costs of, go ahead.
So if you have, let's say, somebody does their rental permit on August 1st, and we sell a house to somebody in late November, is that considered grandfathered, that code inspection and the permit? Or how can it be transferable?
So right now, they would be able to, because right now, we're not saying anything about grandfathering and outlawing and whatever. So they would be able to, if they bought, they had the permit in place August 1st, they sell the house November 1st, somebody moves in, they would be able to, again, continue on.
Okay, would they have to apply for a separate permit?
That's also one of the details we need to discuss. Yeah. There's a lot of details, and I appreciate the conversation tonight because the thing I said to the solicitor before I came down here was, "We need to sit down then after this meeting, if this is accepted, to work out all these details." And that's why we're not trying to rush through this, right? We're trying to make sure we have the information for everybody.
You do have to update your ownership with Congress, I assume?
Yes.
So they even have a record for that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other comments, concerns? We're all even taking snide remarks at this time.
Oh, jeez. No snide remarks. They want to go to dinner.
Okay.
They have dinner.
All right. With that, I ask for a motion to move forward as presented.
Actually, we don't need a motion. Just if you're all in agreement, we'll bring you back more details next month.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay.
So we want you to flush this out.
We, we will go forth and prosper.
Wait until the sausage is actually made.
Hey, I'm an alternate person. That is always painful, so.
All right. So we are going to move on to other business. Hearing none. I am going to say that this is going to be time for adjournment, which is now the time to clap, but before we do that, next planning commission will be April 7th, 2025. If anybody has any thing else, may I have a motion to, to close?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting, which is my last one.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. For those who don't know, Mr. Payne and I came on to the planning commission at the same exact time, right before we all had to start doing it all from Zoom. So. So I, I'm, I'm going to miss him very much, and you're running off to Maine, are you?
Yep.
Okay.
Slowly.
Well, I am going to pass the gavel for Mr. Payne to close it.
The meeting is adjourned.